Good to go? Okay, thanks. All right, good evening Coventry. 6:02 we're going to call the meeting to order. Everybody's ready? Right. Just a quick announcement here if we want to do the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Here.
Councilmember Ko- Kepaldi.
Here.
Councilmember Hul.
Here.
Vice President Verducci.
All right folks, anybody in the building during an emergency, we head out these doors to the back, head out those doors to the front in the event of an emergency. Other than that, let's go for the pledge of allegiance. So tonight we called a special meeting. There were obviously a few issues we did not want to keep carried over into next, you know, couple of weeks. So we have some important business to do tonight. Obviously we've had some changes to those plans over the last couple of days that I'm sure most of you are aware of. We will address those. As you may have noted on our agenda, we put executive session up first. We just wanted to be transparent about that. We all have not met in person, obviously, since a lot of things have transpired. We do need to do some technical things. First in exact session, we're going to obviously be very respectful of your time. But we do need to go into executive session first. I just wanted to be upfront with that. So at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Make that motion.
We have motion, Councilman Pasqua.
Oh, second.
Second from Councilman Hul. Discussion.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Kepaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hul.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
Five and the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Do we need to be explicit with the executive session discussion? Very good, thank you. So just for the record, we will be going into executive session pursuant to RIGL 4246 5A2 for a few different matters. Litigation matters as well as personnel contract and a discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health persons, specifically to the council interview candidates for the interim council solicitor physician. We will be back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
And now I'll entertain a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
So moved.
First. We have a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right, and we will, we did indicate that we did have a vote in executive session. We voted to appoint interim solicitor. We do have that as an agenda item in a bit, but that was the vote taken in executive session.
Mr. Vice President, and just indicate for the record, the tally of the vote.
The tally of the vote was five to zero to appoint John Verdeckia interim solicitor, and he's earning his hourly wage right now. No flat fees. We also voted to select Mr. Igliozzi as interim solicitor as well, but we'll, we'll discuss that when the agenda item comes up. All right, what's next?
Mr. Vice President, I don't know if you want to announce the other vote that was taken in executive session?
Oh, sorry. You're right. The other vote we took was to appoint Benjamin Witt as chief of police. Mr. Chief is here tonight. Vote was taken. Good. That was five to nothing in the affirmative for our new police chief, Chief Witt. Thank you very much for showing up. We appreciate you. All right, we've got a couple of resolutions on here. Do we need to open up public hearing?
I suggest, yes, that public hearing may be opened on docketed matters.
Right.
That's fine. Yes.
Right. We will now begin. First item, as we mentioned, we have a resolution 2025-101 to approve the appointment of John Verdeckia and David Igliozzi as interim town solicitors until such time full-time solicitor is selected by the town council. Do we have a motion?
Make that motion. I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? I will say, just so everyone is clear on this, we obviously had a resignation and we are filling here. These two gentlemen have served in certain capacities with the town over the past couple of years. And it should also be noted that we got them at a bit of a cheaper rate than previously engaged. And we have also determined that we will be receiving all invoices unredacted from these gentlemen going forward. So just wanted to make that announcement clear. And with that, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in this, the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right, welcome aboard. It's gonna be fun. We'll keep you busy. Yeah. We should. Next item on here, we have resolution 2025-102 to approve the appointment of Benjamin Witt as chief of police, as we mentioned earlier. Do I have motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Benjamin Witt, chief of police.
Second.
A first and a second. Any discussion?
I think Coventry's lucky to have you, sir. Welcome aboard. Well, you're already here, but congratulations.
Anybody else? All righty.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
All right, moving right along. We now have public comment on undocketed items. And we're gonna move right into that. If anybody here inside would like to come up to the microphone, speak, state your name and address for the record, and come on up. We will just cruise right along tonight, so please feel free to jump in. And hello.
Hi, Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. I want to take a moment to thank all of you for your due diligence and the hard work you've put in on behalf of Coventry and its residents. Your efforts have shown that you are prioritizing the community above all else, and that does not go unnoticed. To anyone who may doubt this move, consider this: Former Solicitor Stephen Angel is now two-for-two resigning from two towns and taking both council presidents down with him in immediate resignations. He was willing to walk away from over a million dollars a year combined between the two towns because he was caught. As for Ms. Lima's resignation letter, it was in truth a lot of words, but not a lot of honesty, mostly finger-pointing and passing blame, and this has become the usual pattern. I'm hopeful this marks a fresh start for Coventry. Residents are excited to see where this change takes us, and I truly believe it opens the door to a stronger, more transparent future for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Appreciate it. All right, anybody else in council chambers? Come on up and win a prize. Oh. Here we go. There he is, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. Scott Guthrie, 31 Maplewood Drive. I think we missed something on the first page. Public comment on docketed items and votes may be taken? Am I right? Okay. So. So. I'd like to speak on the docketed items. Do you want me to wait? Or you want to go back to the first page where we were supposed to go?
I had indicated, Mr. Vice President, when asked, that the comments I thought were for docketed items initially, but it's totally within your discretion. I don't see any reason.
Can we treat old comments as comments?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. Let's get to.
So all we're doing is going back to docketed, docketed item.
Thank you.
So we're talking about Mr. Angel, we're talking about town council leadership, we're talking about the rules, and we're talking about an audit of invoices. That's what's docketed. First off, go ahead.
I'm sorry, sir, to interrupt, but introduction of new business. is really not a docketed matter. It's listed there on a docket, but only for informational purposes. There won't be any votes. There will be no discussion, no action will be taken on any of those items. And in fact, if you look at the agenda specifically states that the public hearing agendas, I'm sorry, the public agenda item is limited to the subject matter of docketed matters only. In my opinion, it's not a docketed item. And if you go down a little further to the next last sentence, such hearings and comment may not include the introduction of new matters before the council, as some new matters are not up for immediate consideration. So by docketed matters, that should be limited to the two resolutions as contained under Title III. You're certainly free to comment for undocketed items on anything you'd like, but that introduction of new business should not be properly considered as a docketed item for discussion purposes.
Okay, so let me just comment on that. The way the agenda now reads was taken from the city of Cranston. And I brought this up at meetings previous. We had simple agendas, and we didn't have this, this boilerplate language that came out of the city of Cranston that the former, I can't even say former yet, council president had adopted in Coventry. So just go back to the first page. All right. Section two, public comment on docketed items and public hearings, votes may be taken. Now, that's in bold letters. I brought up the last meeting that, that I had some difficulty explaining to someone that the way that this particular boilerplate language works is, is it just keeps going down and down and down, and it says for informational purposes, votes may or may not be taken. But on this agenda, all right, public comment on docketed items, this is highlighted and underlined. All right, and it says, and public hearing, hearings, votes may be taken. So votes may be taken tonight on docketed items. And when you go to section five, it's an introduction. Okay, and it says, votes may be taken. So I don't see there any reason why I can't bring up any comment on something on this agenda where it says votes may be taken, and it's highlighted, you know, right, right on there. So, and everybody knows, and everybody knows that, why we're here tonight. So all I wanted to do was make comment on those four things. You're calling it an introduction, and if it's an introduction, then you can't take a vote on it. The council can't take a vote on it, but it's listed that they're gonna vote on it. So public discussion has to be afforded for anything that a vote may be taken on. Am I right or am I wrong?
You're partially correct, but you're forgetting the word introduction. There will be no, the vote that's indicated there is simply a vote to introduce these matters for future discussion, not present discussion. So it's basically a procedural exercise, not substantive. So.
So what you're saying is?
Well, let me finish respectfully. So the next meeting, as I understand it, is October 14th. If this, if this council votes to forward this to the next meeting, that will be the time for discussion and comment. This is merely, as I said, procedural. This is simply a mechanism to get this on the next docket. It is not beyond that. There'll be no discussion. There'll be no substantive discussion. There'll be no voting as to whether or not to take any specific action. So again, this is, and, you know, it may be a little bit confusing. I understand that. But my opinion, and I also sit in Cranston.
I think this town has been confused for a few.
I sit in Cranston, and they use the same language. They say introduction of new business. And my position in Cranston, as well as here, has always been consistent that I did not believe that those were quote-unquote "docketed items" for discussion at that time.
So we, if we could have a little grace, this is more of a procedural error than it is to limit you, because now if I'm hearing this correctly, then it becomes essentially undocketed, and we're doing undocketed comments anyway. So I think we're gonna, I don't think anybody here is opposed to cleaning up this agenda. It is too cumbersome.
Right.
We're gonna work on that.
Yeah, just, yeah.
It'd be out of order.
No, I think at this point you would be in order. If it's undocketed, essentially.
If, just because something's undocketed does not exclude necessarily something that's docketed. You could speak.
Right, right, exactly.
You can speak about what you want to speak.
So I can speak on the four items that.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, that was easy.
So that, that, that makes, that makes things a lot easier.
You have five seconds.
I have five seconds. One, two, three, four, five. All right, so you're gonna talk about the solicitor's resignation. I made a mistake at the last meeting. I offered some documents when I called him a plagiarist, and I handed you the wrong paper. I gave you the, the 2527 paper, and I have the correct, I have the correct report where, where, word for word, word for word, the Cranston City Council rules, which is copied and pasted into, into the, you know, the Coventry council rules.
Can we take a vote to have those submitted into the record? Entertain a motion? All right, I will. See your hand going?
Please take a vote, though, to accept that into the record.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept Mr. Guthrie's information into the record.
I'll make a motion.
Motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Thank you very much, Clerk.
On the same, on the same note.
We just gotta finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Back to you.
Thank you. On, on the same note, I believe that it would be in the council's best interest and the town's best interest to engage the Rhode Island State Police. I gotta think of the words again. Financial crimes and corruption, or, or public corruption, part of the state police to get the politics out of this. The town, the former town solicitor has a relationship with the Attorney General's office. He also has a, an ongoing suit against a former town council member. I think if we take the politics out of it with an election coming up next year, because it's gonna take a little bit of time to get this done, I think that going to the state police and putting it in the hands of law enforcement, and believe me, they'll get the job done. And they're waiting. Does that sound? As far as the changing of the council leadership, I think Brittany said it best. I read, I read our councilwoman's resignation letter, and, and all it was, was a sob story for herself, and, and she's playing the victim again. And I'm sorry, but, you know, she violated the charter more times than I can count on my fingers. I put that out on a social media post. Violated state law and the Constitution, and that's something that we may have to deal with. A couple of different things that, you know, charter changes that are against state law. Charter, the town financial meeting that was taken away in violation of the Rhode Island Constitution. And I think that that we're heading in a better direction. You know, with you guys, as far as the rules go, that's your business, you know, number three on there. And the audit, I think, would probably be better suited in the state police. And this way it keeps the politics out of it, and it sends it directly to the people that, that we pay to enforce the laws. That's pretty much what I have to say. Enjoy the rest of your evening. And the Red Sox game, so let's get out of here before it dark.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else in council chambers like to come up? Oh, I thought you had something to say, Chief. All right. All right, we will head over to Zoom. Mike, anyone out there? There we are. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Stacy Nichols, 159 Lewis Farm Road. I just want to say how I appreciate everyone. I feel for once, just speaking their own word, I am a huge proponent, and I say this all the time. I know people feel like there's a lot of rock throwers on social media, but I want our community to participate in our local government. I want a variety of opinions and ideas. I think we have a lot of big and complicated problems ahead of us. And I think, hopefully now, moving forwards, we can have some really great dynamic problem solving around things that are uniquely Coventry. And so I just want to say that moving forward, I hope everyone who's participating in Zoom tonight or sitting in chambers, that we give everyone an opportunity to prove that they want to move forward and solve some of these issues. And I just want to thank everyone for serving. I know everyone on town council. It is not a highly paid position, and is probably a lot more than all of you signed up for initially. And so I just want to say thank you for your service, because I feel like people do not say that enough.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I think we all appreciate that. So thank you, Stacy. All right, any other hands on Zoom or? Any hands on Zoom, Mike, or I'll come back to the room? All right, that's it for Zoom. Anybody in chambers, please come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Kevin Snow, 36 Edward Street. I just want to piggyback on what's already been said by Brittany and whatnot. The last two meetings, it feels like for the first time in a long time that you're all listening and interacting, and it's refreshing. And I just want to say thank you for, Councilmember Hul, for spearheading this, and for the entire council for, it feels like finally maybe a change is coming to Coventry, and it's, it's nice to see. So thank you.
Thank you very much for comments. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Evening. I'm Skip Mays, 710 Perry Hill Road in Coventry. Chaos appears to be our middle name in some respects. And one of the things that I would recommend to you in my elected capacity as moderator of the Western Coventry Fire District is the chaos that it's creating. You've got a, a number of items, agenda items, on your dockets for the next many, many months. I would encourage you to favorably consider tabling the movement towards a municipal fire department until some of the dust has settled. It may be a year, it may be two years, but the idea is if you look at the leadership of that group, this group, big decisions, big money. This is not the time to be dealing with that, and I would encourage members of the council to favorably consider tabling that. Take it off the agenda for a year, two years, whatever it takes, as you get other things dealt with and well behind us. I wish you luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, anybody else in council chambers? Come on up. Good evening, sir. Thank you for joining us today.
I'm an email envoy, 88 Reed Avenue, Coventry. I wanted to let you know that I had put a poll up on Facebook recently in my Facebook groups asking about who should become the new vice president. I don't know if this is too early to speak in the meeting or not, but I'm gonna go for it. So with 3,300 views and only 214 votes, says Richard Hul has 212 votes. John Pasqua has 24. Frank Brown has 22, and Ms. Capaldi has 12 votes. Now, Coventry's a great town, proud town, but to move forward, we need a fresh approach and one that builds our economy while protecting the local charm that makes this place a home. We cannot afford politics as usual anymore, as you know. Now, the town charter says that in the absence of the president, the vice president shall preside. If the office of the president becomes vacant, then the vice president shall become president. And if both are absent, the council shall elect a presiding officer. Now, based on that, I believe it's time that Mr. Verducci become the president of the town council. But we also need strong support. He's gonna need all the support he can get. Fresh leadership beyond the presidency. We also need someone who cannot, excuse me, who will not simply just go along with the old guard, and someone who has proven that he's not just a yes man. And that person is Mr. Hul. Although he hasn't been on the council long, he has shown conviction, growth, and courage. He has demonstrated strong business sense and the ability to make tough decisions. And that's exactly the kind of leadership that Coventry needs right now. And that's why I believe Mr. Hul should become the next vice president of the council. Now, together with this new leadership and the continued excellence of our public servants, Coventry will rise again. We will face challenges with grit. We will embrace opportunity with vision, and we will do it all in that true Oka spirit that has carried this town for generations. Thank you all for allowing me the time to speak freely. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you.
I just wanna say I'm glad I got 12 votes, because I didn't want the job, so thank you. But I, I just wanted to tell the public. Sorry. I just want to tell the public, the VP position and the president positions, votes don't weigh any more than the rest of us. And now that we're in a new formation here, we're really working together, and we're finding new, like, we didn't even know that we had certain personalities together and how we're collaborating and talking, so I think that's great.
Some of us multiple personalities.
Okay, and I just wanted to let you know that the main job of a VP and the president is to run this meeting. So, yeah, I just wanted to let you know in case you didn't know that, but I'll shut up now, okay?
No, it's a good point. Good point. All right, going back to public comment in chambers, please step forward and name and address for the record.
What's up, family? Brian Keisling, Rhode Island Fund. Livestream. I got two things to bring up on it. First off, I'm getting a flood of messages. I was in the shower, getting ready to take a shower. I'm getting a flood of messages. There's no live. YouTube says waiting. There's like 44 people in the lobby. It's just a black screen that says waiting. The Zoom link is inexistent. People aren't finding it. The few people that do have it are active on the Zoom, but other people are scrounging, trying to get the Zoom link. Now, I've seen, what's up? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Now, if you look at social media in the past 72 hours, you're going to see that this has been a very big topic. There's been posts on posts on posts about what was going to go on today. But not one post from a council member sharing the link. All right, maybe that we should work on that. Did you share it? You share, I didn't see yours then. I didn't, I scanned through quickly and I was like, nobody shared though. I was trying to find it myself because it would have been easier for me to just log in online tonight.
I shared the link too on my page.
And so we were having extreme difficulties. I got out of the shower, I rushed on down here. You know what I mean? I turned on my live, I got people watching the live right now. But like, I was told that my services weren't needed. Right? Just like at the Johnson's Pond thing, which got over 10,000 views. Right? And I think that it's time to curb that mentality. Right? Just because some people don't value my opinion or my freedom of speech doesn't mean that I am not a valued member of this community and I'm not projecting your messages forward. Also, on the note of vice president, Alisa, I think that you should be the vice president. You've had a long history here in Coventry and your father has had a long history here as well. You have an extensive knowledge that normal people don't have, and I think that it should be you. I think that Mr. Hool should be after you, a close second. But just because of your experience, I think that it should be you. Thank you guys for letting me share.
Thank you. And just to check in on that, to our IT friend in back, are we having issues?
It's nothing we can fix. It'll be posted, it'll be posted later on.
So YouTube is just a recording that they can get after the fact? Zoom is working? Okay, just for anybody who couldn't hear that either here or elsewhere. YouTube stream is broken. We are going to have to fix that. In the meantime, it's going to be recording up there. Also, for now or in the future, try to use the Zoom if possible. That's a little bit more steady. Did you have something?
Yeah, why can't we do our own Facebook Live? We all have phones.
All right.
Dan, let's talk about that. We could do that.
Cody, I'll talk to Cody tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else in chambers? Public comment. All right, seeing none. Oh, Councilwoman.
I just want to compliment everyone that came down tonight because this is a really great filled room. And I'm surprised more of you don't want to talk because I thought you were all here to say something. But even if you don't say anything, thank you for coming down because it's filled.
Second that. Thank you. All right, back on the agenda. All right, so we are back on the agenda. Item five, we did originally have a discussion as a solicitor mentioned. I think the only thing to do with item A here, which was discussion or action on termination of Angel La. We have subsequent to this posting received a resignation effective, I believe it was yesterday. And I think the only thing the council needs to do on this particular matter at the moment is to vote to accept the resignation.
Can I make a motion to accept that resignation letter?
You can.
And Mr. Vice President, also the vote should also be to take the letter, make it part of the record. Both resignations.
Good point. All right, so can we rescind that motion and do a dual motion or two separate motions? So you're making me dangerous here.
I, I would do it in two separate motions.
All right, two separate motions. So current motion on the floor now is to accept the resignation from Councilman Hool. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi. Councilmember Hool.
With pleasure.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative motion passes.
All right, we accept. We accept. Now, we would like to entertain, oh, yep, entertain a motion to accept the resignation into the record.
So moved.
Oh.
The resignation letters.
The resignation letters.
As part of the record.
As part of the record. That's what I meant to say. So we would like a motion to accept the resignation letters as part of the record.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
It is, I'll be brief. This is, it's, it's not an individual win against any individual person here. This was a battle for transparency. And unfortunately, the blockades that were put in place led us to where we are. So I think tomorrow we're all going to wake up and Coventry is going to be on a better path.
Thank you, Councilman Hool. Further discussion? All right.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hool.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative motion passes.
All right, similar, next item, we had a discussion, action on changing the town council leadership. Similarly, we had some subsequent developments in that and we have received the resignation from the president. I'm going to similarly suggest perhaps we just take the vote to accept the resignation and also put that resignation letter into the record. Can I have a motion to do both of those?
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of the former town council president Hillary Lima and at the same time adding her resignation letter to the record.
I'll second that.
Right, we have, first we have a second discussion. Hearing none, council, geez, you got me doing it. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hool.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative motion passes.
Yeah, no, thank you. We did do that? Okay. No, it's okay. As always though, if that person wants to either send an email or give me a note after or give me a call, we'll, we'll take that and we'll certainly, I will talk or we can actually put your comments on the record. So sorry we missed you on that one. All right, moving right along. Item C, discussion action, town council rules for the 25-27 term. So basically this was an item we alluded to in last week. We won't be taking any votes. I have a couple amendments I wanted to share just in case anybody was interested in adding them. I have some copies here and I have a copy for the clerk if you're interested. I guess you should be. Pretty simple. I know we probably want to go through these rules, but I think first and foremost, we needed to deal with the agenda piece. So obviously this council moving forward is not going to be hiding anything from the agendas. So what I've laid out for you in front is just a simple addition to page two of the rules. What you'll see first is just a snapshot. Right now it says under the presiding officer, their duties would include deciding docketed items, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to propose to add, this may be a little too much verbiage, but feel free to add to it. This is just to get the discussion going. The meeting agenda shall be prepared to allow any council member to submit proposed items for consideration. The presiding officer shall not have the exclusive authority to remove requested items. All members shall retain the right to replace matters before the council pursuant to procedures established in section three of these rules entitled Meeting Docket, Public Participation, Open Meetings Act. The thrust of this being, everyone's allowed to say on the agenda, you know, we all would, you know, respectfully, you know, have the item, you know, mull that over. But you know, in case we want to put this on the next agenda, just wanted to give you something to look at. The second one's a little bit quicker. I just want to give everybody maybe a couple more days. And obviously we didn't have a solicitor to consult this with, so I'd want him to review this as well. But essentially before, we had to have things in six days before the submission deadline. I just want to give everybody two more days and make it four. I think we can move a little bit quicker with this stuff. I think, you know, it's simply adding something to the agenda. So if it's not a full resolution or something that takes a lot of policy change, I don't see why we would need the additional time. But again, just my two suggestions for now, if anybody else has any, feel free. I think he was first.
So I, I do, I'm not, for clarification, I'm not sure how you want us to handle these rule changes. But I, you know, I have writing on every page. You know, in.
If everyone wants to send them, send their changes to me, I can put them on one document.
Really what I'm looking to exclude, Mr. Solicitor, is anything that gives one person the authority or power of greater than any of the rest of us. So I was going through here and it's like sole approval of when, you know, in section three, when you state that the, for the benefit of all the clerk with the assistance and approval of the president, I'm scratching out the word approval of the president because it's going to be our job to notify the clerk for items that we want to talk on the agenda. So I'll send this over because it's, it's more verbiage.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we talk about, we don't have a veto power to some degree in here. There's, there's things that I, yeah, my goal is to eliminate a one body.
Yeah.
Person.
That, that's the difficult part there is because at a certain point, someone has to contact the clerk to say it's on or off. So I went about it one way to basically say it shouldn't be, you know, meant to restrict. But that's what I was saying, starts the discussion. I think that's a good idea. We'll throw everything over at Dan, give him something to do and.
I make, I want to make a suggestion. If you could send this document as a Word doc so we can redline it because I couldn't do, I can't edit the PDF. It's like locked or something.
For some reason, it doesn't let you.
Send this as a Word doc and we all redline it, it'll be easier than you reading my chicken scratch.
If Cody can turn it into a Word document, we don't have the original, that's the former solicitor's problem.
It's fine, yeah.
If Cody can do that, then I can send it to you in a Word. Sure.
Yeah. I just want to, I was looking, yes, I agree with Councilman Hool on making it, getting rid of the sole language around here. A lot I was doing in here is kind of like the process and the procedure of this whole meeting. I can't remember who brought this up, but somebody brought it up and I was like, wow, this is really great. Like having a sign in sheet in the back before you come in. So people don't have to say their address up here. I don't know if that's a legal thing or not. So if they have their name and their address written down, because it's kind of weird where you say you live every time. I mean, there's just crazy people out there. That's just my thought. I also would like to talk about having a sergeant in here again. I'm looking at my dad's.
Hold on, hold on, I see him squirming.
It's the vice president and councilwoman, I apologize for interrupting. But my understanding of the introduction of new business is not that we were going to have a substantive discussion on, on these items, as I, as I said to the gentleman that, that came up before. It was my, and if I'm wrong, please.
It's a new relationship they're going to work through.
Having discussion on that tonight, why everyone's here.
But it's listed as introduction of new business. My understanding of introduction of new business is simply to decide whether or not this is going to go on the agenda in the future for discussion. Because if that's the case, then we have to reopen a public hearing and let everybody weigh in on, 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 on these items as well. And again, it may be, and I beg your forgiveness if it's my unfamiliarity with the way Coventry does this. But like in Cranston, there is no comment on introduction of new business. It's simply a vote to send it to the committees and then the comment takes place. So I'm not sure how you, you do that here.
Semantics, and I think we should rewrite this because I know that a lot of people here, they're here because of these items that we were going to talk about.
I think the, just to kind of summarize everything, obviously this agenda pre-existed prior to this solicitor having, having the ability to put eyes on it. And I think our process is a little different here. So that could have gone under a different category. So it's something we need to work on going forward regarding how we're docketing items.
And that's a process, a part of the town council rules.
Yes.
So it's all a part of this process. Yeah.
Yeah. But to the solicitor's point, I think it should just be introduction. Make a decision to put this to the next agenda where we can have the issues of the council rules, whatever changes you want to make, whatever other discussion you want to have. Put that on so it can be voted on and it can be public comment at the same time. Yeah, I think this agenda just got a little too slick and a little too many pieces in it. You know, for instance, as the solicitor might have pointed out, that's usually a recommendation to introduce it so it goes to committee. We have two smaller committees that aren't quite standing yet. So I think we're just trying to, I won't use that expression, but we're trying to force 10 pounds of something into a five pound bag. So if we can, appreciate your comments. As the town manager suggested, why don't we put all this into one document? We can review it in between meetings and then we could just put it on as a discussion item next time and not under new business.
Yeah, and again, it may be my, it may be my unfamiliarity with the semantics and with the headings and things like that. But to me, I always understood introduction of new business to mean it's not up for discussion tonight. It's not for discussion.
Yeah, no, we'll figure it out. Yeah.
Like I said, if I'm wrong, I apologize.
We'll figure it out. I, I think we're all in the same direction on this. Councilman Hool.
An inquiry here. The, at the last meeting, the town council rules were suspended. There was a motion that suspended those rules. There was never a motion that put these rules back into play. So we are, we can still operate under the assumption that these rules are suspended. And basically what I'm looking for is until, from now until the time that we correct the agenda control issue, that there will, won't be an issue between now and then.
I, I understand. My, my concern was more from an open meetings perspective. If, you know, my understanding was that, again, as I, I don't know what the gentleman's name was, but I, I kind of stopped him and said, you know, introduction of new business, there should be no commentary because it's not a docketed item.
I'm just asking for an inquiry in regards to are we still operating with no council rules? Because they have never been a motion put back.
I wasn't here, so I'm not, I'm, I'm going by what you're telling me. But if you suspended them, I, I don't know how that was phrased. Were they suspended for the night for, for a specific item or?
They suspended it.
An open ended suspension.
It didn't, it didn't state one way or the other. And solicit, soon to be solicitor Igliosi told me how to do it. So that's the way I did it, but it didn't have a timeframe. I actually said, no, it was put public comment back onto the docket tonight. But we never reinstated the town council rules.
Okay, my, again, without being there, without reading and seeing exactly what happened, my understanding when rules are suspended is temporary in nature, in my opinion. And again, without hearing the verbiage, it would be, it, it happens infrequently, like I said, in Cranston. But it's only for a specific time or just for that night or just for, to address some other item. So I, I don't know what type of language was used here. You, you may be absolutely right. I can't opine one way or the other. I don't know if they're still suspended. I, I just don't have enough information to know that.
I don't think it has a net effect on what we're doing. I think we're all generally agree.
But I think we have to see if we have to reinstate them to make sure that we're following all the rules. I did not reinstate them.
Okay.
As I said, I don't mean to be redundant, but if you, it depends on your verbiage. If you said, I want to suspend the rules and take something out of order, you know, on the docket and move it up.
I'll tell you exactly what I said. We could probably get it on Zoom right now. But I said, I want to suspend the town council rules. What did I say? I said I want to, so I can put back on the docket the public comment for undocketed items.
But was it because of that meeting?
Yeah.
It didn't specify.
Hillary took off the undocketed items. So these people couldn't talk. And this was horrific. This was not right. She was taking away freedom of speech and we need to get it back on so we could then proceed with the council meeting.
Okay, I, I, I understand where you're coming from. I, with the limited information I have, I, I would think that that suspension, in my opinion, without more, applied to the goings on of that night. I don't think it. goings-on of that night. I don't think it was a blanket suspension of Council rules going forward, based on what I know, which is pretty limited. I wasn't there.
Yeah, I think it was temporary in nature too, but you know, we appreciate it. We're obviously trying to get it going.
Again, I don't want it to go as gonna be an issue moving forward.
But we'll make sure we clean it up for the next one. Absolutely. Let's see, back on the agenda, we have one more item. So similarly, we're gonna run into this as we kind of just discussed a few different times. But again, this was more to get it out there. I welcome everyone's feedback on this item too. So item D, we were talking about the discussion of invoices between the town and Angel Law, excuse me. So originally, this was brought up and, you know, the words forensic audit came out. Maybe that is the path, maybe it's not, but just wanted to update everyone here. You know, I did some research, did reach out to certain entities, talked to the State's Office of Municipal Finance. That's usually the first place you want to go when you're dealing with something with money in municipal. This was not under their purview. Big picture-wise, I think what we need is some sort of analysis, you know, one way or another, you know, to look at both financial aspects or other aspects. And then this basically leads you down the path to the state auditor general perhaps, or was previously mentioned, the state police. So I just wanted to set up this topic. You know, again, we'll work on this. We'll make contacts. We'll do our diligence. We now have a solicitor who could probably help inform us on this. Whatever the path, I sincerely hope we don't find something. I really don't want to find something, but we have to do our due diligence on this. We gotta ensure the financial integrity. So one way or another, we're gonna get to that. But so again, just wanted to launch the discussion on that, let you all know, public and other members, that's what I did so far. But let's explore other avenues and just get it open on the table. Now that this has been introduced, maybe we can talk about it amongst ourselves and figure some things out, bring in the solicitor when he's done figuring out what rules we have going on and everything else we threw at him tonight, and we'll get going on that. So I just didn't want anybody to think we were moving on from this issue. So that's all I had on that. Any...
We have to, we have to take a motion or a vote to move Section 5, B as in Boise, C as in Charlie, and D as in David, to the next agenda, correct? Because tonight was just an introduction to new business.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, you know, going under that, yeah, we could, or I think we could just docket it as its own item. So this is gonna be the style approach here. I see.
Again, I, you know, this is my influence. We take a vote to, as I said, send it to the committee.
Don't say crazy.
This would be a vote to send it to, or list it on the next agenda for consideration.
Okay. Yeah, the other municipality working, right. All right. I will entertain a motion to schedule a leadership vote for the next council meeting, October 14th.
So moved.
We have a motion, Councilman Hool, seconded. Councilman Brown. And any discussion? All right.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hool.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
Five in the affirmatives, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right, I think we did it. Well, we gonna do more? Oh, so you wanna, you wanna make a motion to put these on the next agenda for a vote?
I, yeah, we can take them, but yeah, I think they need to be on the agenda so we can get them solidified.
All right, well, we, oh, go for it.
That's fine. You could have done it as a block as well. You could have taken a vote just to do eight.
Well, we're learning. All right, we won't make.
But if you're doing them one at a time, you should do them all.
Okay. Well, it's just as quick as calling for a vote as for them on a block anyway. So I will entertain a motion on item C.
Make that motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hool.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right, up next, I will entertain a motion for D, discussion on the audit of invoices between the town and Angel Law. I will entertain a motion to have that discussion on the next agenda.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We have first, we have a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hool.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right. Now, I think we did it. Thank you all for your patience tonight. We'll get better at this, and we appreciate your involvement. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? No. Clerk, the eyes have it, yea, nay? No, I think we can call the meeting and stand adjourned.